Good afternoon. I had a yet another session of the meeting. We have public hearings. We have City of New Brunswick 2014 budget, resolution 061434A. This is a resolution to be 2014, not municipal by title. Resolution 61434B. It's a resolution to approve amendment of City of New Brunswick 2014 budget. We have resolution 61434C. City of New Brunswick resolution to approve 2014 budget. And we have resolution 61434D. Resolution to set tax levy for Board of Education for 2014. We have a couple of public hearings. We have the Gada Cafe and Restaurant, continuation of conditions of ABC license. We have Gaminos Inn, imposition of conditions on ABC license. And the proposed termination of contract with Quality Communications Systems. We have no ordinances for second reading. We have ordinances for discussions first reading. Orders 061401. It's a one ordinance providing for the 2014 Gada Cafe improvement program by and in the City of New Brunswick, the town of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating revenues 462,895, therefore authorizing of debt in the amount of 2 million to 97,000, and requiring a down payment of 165,895. Orders 402. It's a one ordinance providing for various improvement to the sewer system by and in the City of New Brunswick in the town of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating 2,215,000, therefore unauthorized additions of 2,215 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Orders 403. It's an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 17, zoning, delete towers as permitted use in C5 zones. We have resolutions. Resolution 435. Approve the amendments. Resolution 436. Approve paper from 52414 to 6614. Resolution 437. Authorize review for routine tax sales certificates. Resolution 438. Approve request for use of city property requested by Muriel James and Lucille Martin. The location is Blue River Park, College Avenue, Laffady Street, entrance lawn. This is for the wedding ceremony on Sunday, August 10, 2014, from 14:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Resolution 439. Approve continuation of all conditions for 2014-2015 legal license for Gada Cafe and Restaurant, trading as Perrier Globe, 13 Patterson Street. Resolution 440. Approve continuation of conditions for 2014-2015 legal license for Kelly's Corner, trading as Kelly's Corner, 75 Morrell Street. Resolution 441. Approve amendment of resolution 051415. The reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of 527 to benefit an amendment for Police Director Anthony Capullo in the matter of Steven Milton versus the City of New Brunswick, from 5,956.15 to 6,438.15. Resolution 442. Approve amendment of resolution 101373. The reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of 1,105 to Lawrence Bitterman for Detective Christopher Bonheimer in the matter of religious verse versus New Brunswick, from 2,737 to 3,842. Resolution 443. Approve amendment of resolution 021408. The reason is to pay a finer bill in the amount of 255 to Lawrence Bitterman for representation of Sergeant John Baggan in the matter of Jeffrey Daigle versus Sergeant John Baggan, from 1,000 to 1,255 with Jeffrey. Resolution 444. Was full at the request of the Chief Financial Officer. Resolution 445. Approve ABC legal license renewal for 2014-2015. Resolution 446. Approve award of contract with Baker &amp; Taylor for group's purchase from a wholesale distributor for the public library, not to exceed $49,000 per an open. Resolution 447. Approve purchase by Police Department on the state contract 8-77560 software license and related service, from China International Corporation for Software License Enterprise Scheduling Software, not to exceed 13,838 with 40. Resolution 448. Approve payment for emergency procurement of the works for the repair of the group of public works, the building number one, with LA Home Improvement Contractors doing business as Marion and Jacobson General Contractors, not to exceed 425. Resolution 449. Approve request for use of city property requested by New Chamber. The location is War Memorial Park, for public forum to defend the public of the New Brunswick active wage test ordinance in Saturday, July 5, 2014, with a rain date of Saturday, July 12, 2014, from 8:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Resolution 450. Approve request for use of property requested by Phi Sigma Phi Alpha Theta Chapter. The location is Blue River Park and Pavilion for a walk-in to benefit fish for American invention competition on Sunday, October 26, 2014, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Resolution 451. Authorized termination of contract with Quality Communications Inc. and authorized repealing for radio maintenance for the Police Department. Resolution 452. Approve amendment of resolution 061421, change order number 2-R, with J&amp;J Glass Corporation doing business as Snowglass and Mirrors Inc., from Remsen Avenue Fire Museum and Community Center, the amount is 3,425, and the approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% of the amount of the amount of the unit contract. Resolution 453. Approve amendment of resolution 061432, change order number 1-H, identical payment from Remsen Avenue Fire Museum and Community Center, the amount is 649. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% of the amount of the unit contract. Resolution 454. Approve amendment of resolution 061453, change order number 1-R, with J&amp;J Glass Corporation doing business as Snowglass and Mirrors Inc., from Remsen Avenue Fire Museum and Community Center, and the amount is 501, and approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% of the amount of the unit contract. Resolution 455. Approve award of contract and authorization to repeat, partial, in safety in doing business as Atlantic Tactical for work uniforms for the Police Department and Unit Number Four. The term is 12 months, starting on June 19, 2014, and ending on June 18, 2015, not to exceed 36,916 cents. Resolution 456. Approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by Pre-Cast Services Inc., and the reason is to perform construction and destruction and assemble and disassemble the cranes throughout the project located at the Hoover Johnson University Hospital East Tower. The dates and times are Saturdays from July 12, 2014, to November 8, 2014, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sundays from July 13, 2014, to November 9, 2014, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Resolution 457. Approve award of contract with Groupas Brothers Inc., for Sudan Street roadway improvement, Phase Two, from French Street to Thursday Avenue, and Agnison Avenue to Commercial Avenue, not to exceed 531,254.38. Resolution 458. Approve rejection of bid and authorization to repeat requested by the Police Department for translation services for the Police Department. Resolution 459. Authorized tax collector to transfer over payments on several tax and UTP accounts. Resolution 460. Authorized property lien for border of security at 194 Power Street, the amount is 2,521 with 81 cents. Resolution 461. Approve award of contract with Institute for forensic psychology. This is for psychological services for the Police and Fire Departments. It's a 12-months contract, beginning on June 19, 2014, and ending on June 18, 2015, not to exceed 70,250 per an open. Resolution 462. Approve request for use of city property requested by brokers and a leniency council. The location is Blue River Park Mansion Loan and Pavilion for Greek age events on Saturday, October 25, 2014, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Resolution 463. Approve request for use of city property requested by the New Brunswick Cultural Center. The location is Boyd Park for the third annual Hub City Sounds Music and Concert Series. Dates and time, Saturdays, August 9, 2014, 9:06:14, 9:27:14, from 12:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and 9:20:14 from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. On Sundays, 9:14:14 from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and 9:21:14 from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and for the sexual booty required. Resolution 464. Approve request for street closing requested by the New Brunswick Cultural Center. The street location is Livingston Avenue between George Street and the Hilton Hotel. This is for the second annual Central Jersey Jazz Fest Festival on Saturday, September 13, 2014, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Resolution 465. Approve amendment of resolution 071309. The reason is to extend award contract for one additional year, from July 1, 2014, to June 30, 2015, with Corporate Synnergies Group LLC, and this is for insurance brokerage services. Resolution 466. Approve amendment to resolution 071310. The reason is to extend award contract for one year, one, I'm sorry, one additional year, from July 1, 2014, to June 30, 2015, with Business and Government Insurance Agency for insurance brokerage services. This is what addition are you demanding? Resolution 467. Approve amendment of resolution 051474. The reason is change date of amendment from July 26, 2014, to August 30, 2014. Approve request for use of city property requested by Greater Worship Kidnot Church. Boyd Park for a praise and worship concert on Saturday, August 30, 2014, from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Resolution 468. Approve award of contract for three years with devising enterprise solutions for long-distance telephone service, from June 19, 2014, to June 18, 2017, not to exceed 16,200 dollars. Resolution 469. Approve all premise raffle merchandise at 222 Livingston Avenue for Ashen MF Memorial Temple on December 6, 2014. Resolution 470. Authorized authorization to repeat requested by the Senior Center Resource Center for food products for the senior citizen resource center. Resolution 471. Authorized renewal of agreement between Geros Escalier and Close to Basic License for Programs for 2014, not to exceed 53,000. Resolution 472. Approve discontinuation of conditions for 2014-2015 legal license for the Gada Cafe and Restaurant, trading as the Gada Cafe and Restaurant, 156 Commercial Avenue. Resolution 473. Approve disapproval imposition of conditions for 2014-2015 legal license for Gaminos Inn to 84 Remsen Avenue. And resolution 474. Approve award of contract to DC Doggy Madeline Housing Partners LLC for 10 affordable special needs housing, and the location is 9 Viper Street, not to exceed 604,385. Resolution 475. Approve amendment of resolution 051474. 476. The reason is to add a rain date of Friday, June 20, 2014. Approve request for street closing requested by Unity Square Capital Charity, the office of Metashem. The location is Remsen Avenue between Sudan and Townsend Street for the celebration of all Unity Square Community Center. Date is Friday, June 13, with a rain date of 10/20. The time is 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for this entry required. Any other things to mention? That's it? Okay. At this time, the meeting is called to order.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Council Vice President Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Garladi.
Present.
Council President Escobar.
Here. Please be advised that the latest requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied, and that they are new notice, which gave sufficient notice of time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the Municipal Council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with the City Clerk, has been placed on an appropriate voting point, the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the Commisional.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is this close for a moment to one of those Americans and African who was still there after the war in Afghanistan? Thank you. At this time, I would like to take a motion for approval of the April 16 meeting.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
We're going to start with the public hearings. We're going to start with the City of New Brunswick 2014 budget.
Council President, I have a resolution 061434A regarding the reading of the budget by title only.
And the third reading of the resolution?
Whereas NJSA 48:4-8, as amended, provides that the budget shall be read in full at the public hearing, or may it be read by title only if, at least one week prior to the date of the hearing, of a complete copy of the approved budget shall be made available for public inspection in the free public library, and is made available for each person requesting the same during said week and during the public hearing. Now therefore be resolved by the Municipal Council of the City of New Brunswick, that it is hereby declared that the conditions of NJSA 48:4-8, as amended set forth in the subsections 1A and 1B, have been met, and therefore the budget for 2014 shall be read by title only.
I offer the foregoing resolution and move its adoption.
Seconded that motion.
We have a motion for reading of the budget. Can you, you go first.
Sure.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. The resolution is adopted. Now at this time, I would like to take a motion to open the hearing of the budget.
I move that the budget here be opened.
Seconded that motion.
We have a motion. So to open the hearing of the budget, local.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Escobar. Council President, this time is fixed for the public hearing on the municipal budget and the tax resolution for 2014. The budget was approved by the governing body on April 16, 2014, was advertised as required by law on May 24, 2014, together with notice of hearing for this time. Printed copies have been made available for the public during the past week.
At this time, before we start the hearing, I just want to remind everyone who wishes to address the council on the budget, that they need to come up to the mic, give your name, address, speak clearly, and speak to the council president, and when necessary, I would refer the questions to the member of the 24 municipal officials that need to ask their questions. The questions at this time are solely on the municipal budget. We have nothing to do with the school budget, and we have nothing to do with the county. So therefore, I now declare open the public hearing on the municipal budget and tax resolution
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Charles Cradaville. I live in the sixth ward of New Brunswick. I wanted to ask in the, or the resolution to read the budget by title, it was said that the copies of the budget have been made available at the public hearing. That would be here, no?
They're made available to the public.
But I heard specifically that they were available during the public hearing. Are they available?
They have been available.
Are they available tonight for folks who are here at the public hearing?
Yes.
You have, they are available.
Where are they?
Right now. What? Hold on, Mr. Hamilton. It's just, I know that, if you want to see a little copy, because I don't have one.
I'd like a copy. I assume they would be available.
You have one, because you were asked, I know that you have one, you got one already.
How do you know I have one?
Yes, you do, because you asked to, as a meeting, and the meeting was not able to have, and due to you to discuss the budget, that's right, you said. But we do have one, if we could make available to Mr. Cradaville, and then you will sit down and look at it, and they come back with questions about it?
I can wing it if you just hand it to me.
Well, it's a very.
I'm familiar with it. I've seen it online, but I'm just saying it was said out loud that it's available at this hearing, and I'm asking where is it available?
We will, we will make it, the copies will be made available shortly. Do you have some copies, Anderson?
Yes.
So you give us, thank you. They will be made available in a few minutes, Mr. Cradaville.
Okay. Sure. So printed copies are made available to the public during the gathering?
They have it. They were available at different sites. I'm just referring that it was mentioned that tonight there was some available for you.
What was that?
It was reading.
It was in the resolution that it was.
That it was read.
Said they were available at the public hearing. I can only assume that means tonight, and I don't see them.
Yes, Mr. Cradaville.
So I guess I'll just start without my copy of the budget.
Well, you may sit down and come back when you get the copy. That's what you wish to do, so we could move forward.
I can move forward without the copy. I've just, just, my first question is, why aren't the copies of the budget available here tonight?
It was listed.
Okay.
We didn't have, you know, we had it, but we didn't bring them up.
Okay. My next question would be, apology accepted. My next question would be, how many new employees or new positions are created in this budget? Are any jobs being eliminated, or are there any jobs being added?
Mr. Larkin.
The budget assumes 20 new hires in the Police Department.
Yes. 20?
Mr. Cradaville, you following the answer?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just.
20 new hires are assumed in the Police Department, and those individuals, those new hires are replacing people who have retired over the past year and a half. The budget assumes four new hires in the Fire Department, again, replacing people who have retired. And I would say the only two new net jobs are two part-time drivers in the Dial-A-Ride program.
I'm going to.
Any other vacancy, any other vacancy in the other city departments, there has been a replacement, fully assumed, for those vacancies.
Are there any positions being eliminated?
No, nor are.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville.
Thank you. As far as the capital budget, are the vehicles that are being purchased, what departments are those for, and what types of vehicles?
We're looking to replace a sanitation truck in the Department of Public Works for a value of $270,000. We're looking to replace two Cushing vehicles in the Parks Department for a total of $56,000. We're looking to add a dump truck for the Shave Tree Division at $50,000. We're looking to replace a Sand Pro in the Parks Department. That's a vehicle that helps with wall, fields, and things like that. We're looking to add, actually replace two police SUVs at a value of $30,000 each. We're looking to replace a Dial-A-Ride van, a nine-passenger bus with a wheelchair lift at a value of $40,000. There is one vehicle replacement proposed for housing inspections at $21,585. I think that represents all the vehicles.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin. Cradaville?
Thank you. Regarding the water utility, are there any major improvements in the capital budget? Looks like there are, whether those.
Yeah, well, we would have acted on that a couple of meetings ago, but because the borrowing authority was already approved by the council, but I'll go through some of them if you'd like. We're looking to add some new membranes to Cell Number Two for $409,000. We're looking to enter into an asset management plan for all of our storage tanks at $875,000. Looking to do some roof repair at Weston's Mill. We're looking to do some media and under-drain replacement at the water treatment plant, and we're appropriating some supplemental money to complete the raw water pump station upgrades.
Thank you. Which parks are slated for improvements in this? I know there's been talk of Recreation Park getting improvements for many years. Is that a part of this budget?
Mr. Larkin.
We had to appropriate no new money for Recreation Park. The money has been approved in previous years, and I think from what I hear from Mr. Patterson, it is likely to go out to bid very shortly. The work that's being done at Joyce Kilmer Park was appropriated under previous budgets, so there's no new money proposed for that.
Any other question, Mr. Cradaville?
I guess, I did want to ask about the crossing guards. Is the Board of Ed still going to reimburse the city for those expenses? And what changes can we expect in terms of next school year, as far as number of crossing guards, their pay rate, and who is going to be overseeing that?
What I could tell you, Mr. Larkin, could answer probably is, well, he's in the budget right now for that.
The third shared service agreement with the Board of Ed does in fact reimburse us for school crossing guard expenses in this year's budget. School crossing guards will continue to be supervised by the Police Department. They will make recommendations on new hires. They'll make recommendations on which posts they think are most important to fill, or to cover, I should say. And as I said a few times here, collectively over the summer, a group of us will make some recommendations to the mayor on the existing pay scale of school crossing guards.
Thank you. The, I think the last question I'll have is about the budget imbalances. There's three of them listed, reserved to debt service, general capital surplus, and then the possible elimination of the red light camera program. Can you shed some light on why those are imbalances in the budget?
Well, they're considered also possibly non-recurring items, and apparently the Division of Local Government Services requires us to identify those. And the first two items don't happen every year. There was some reserve money from debt service that we're taking in as a revenue. The same was true with our capital improvement plan. We're taking in as a revenue. Not sure whether we would be doing something similar in the 2015 budget. And we included red flags simply because the county is going to be reconstructing the intersection of Park and Easton Avenue, which would require the camera to come out of service. So we're identifying it as a possible non-recurring revenue item. I'm told that to get the red light camera reinstalled after the renovation of the intersection has been done requires state approval again.
Understood. So is there a timeframe for when the county would be removing the red light?
We know the timing of that, the county will be.
Don't, but I'm going to ask Tom, do you have a feel for it?
The other thing about timeframe.
So at this time, we don't know, Mr. Cradaville.
But it's expected to be this year in the budget.
Correct. I expect it to come out of service sometime this year. That's my expectation.
And can anyone tell me the status of that pilot program from the state government that enables that? I know it's a five-year pilot program, and we're in year five. Is there an expectation that the program might not continue, or is there an expectation that there will be a bill passed that's signed to allow it to continue in 2015?
That's, if you will, that question, if you wanted, you know, it's not related to the budget. We gave you the answer on the budget in terms of the red light, in terms of the county moving. So if we could wait until the end and ask about the red light program, because it has nothing to do with the budget at this time, with the numbers that we have right now.
Well, it's cited as a budget at that. So that means it won't be, it's not expected next year. And I'm asking, I'm just asking, does the city expect that the program will be legal next year? Or does the city expect that it might, might be a permanent end to the red light?
Right now, Mr. Larkin answered to you that it's in the balance, because the county will be removing that. So that's why it's reflected in the budget at that, like that. So at this time, that's the answer. In terms of the red light camera program, we will tell you, erase, the city will have it on, or at the public portion of the hearing.
I'm just saying to you, it says, quote, "possible elimination of program." That doesn't. That doesn't, that's not the same thing as the county.
We will move forward, as soon as we know, we will move forward and give you that information.
Sorry?
You have the reset, please.
Okay, well, that's all I have, I hope to get answer on that eventually.
Thank you. Anybody else on the body wishes to address the council on the budget?
Mr. Escobar, I can just make one point on sheet 3B3, which is the calculation of the tax levy and the tax rate. I just wanted to point out that the rate is actually going to decrease this year by two tenths of a penny. And, you know, relatively, for all practical purposes, the rate is flat. But I wanted to point out that on the introduced budget document, in the middle of the page, there is a statement that says, therefore, there will be an increase in taxes for municipal purposes. That was stated in error. There is a, actually, a very slight reduction in the tax rate. The tax levy was down by $160,000, which allowed us to keep the rate flat and also very slightly reducing it.
Thank you. At this time, have you got any more questions for the public? I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Does the President move the hearing be closed? Seconded.
We have a motion to close the hearing process for local?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
The President, a resolution 0614348, or B, rather, to present this time, amending the municipal budget for the year 2014.
The Attorney, please read the resolution.
By the municipal council, whereas the local municipal budget of the year 2014 was approved on the sixteenth day of April 2014, and whereas the public hearing on said budget has been held as advertised, and whereas it is desired to amend said approved budget now, therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the City of New Brunswick, County of Middlesex, that the following amendments to the approved budget of 2014 be made. Total general revenues from $80,566,080.65 to $80,877,220.48. Total general appropriations from $80,566,080.65 to $80,877,220.48. Be it further resolved that two certified copies of this resolution be filed with the Office of the Director of the Division of Local Government Services for his certification of the 2014 local municipal budget so amended.
I go for the following resolution, move it to the Doctor.
Another second?
A second.
Mr. Escobar, before you vote on it, I would just like to tell you what the amendments are. That four grants have come in since budget introduction, and they're now being included in the, soon to be included in the adopted version of the budget. $113,000 came in from the Brunswick City Market towards the Clean Team Program. $79,500 came in from the New Jersey Forest Services for no net loss in trees that we lost as a result of the Route 18 project. $60,000 for safe and secure communities, and $51,208.07 from the Department of Treasury for the Clean Communities Program.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call for the motions?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, the resolution is adopted.
The President, I request that the clerk be instructed to read section two, the adopting resolution for the budget, R.061434C.
And if there are, please read this resolution.
Be it resolved by the governing body of the City of New Brunswick, County of Middlesex, that the budget here and there before set forth and hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated and the sums therein set forth as appropriations and authorization of the amounts of, A, $27,777,646.89 for municipal purposes, and B, $1,413,865.91 for school purposes in the Type I school districts, only NJSA 18A:9-2 to be raised by taxation, and E, $1,45224.24 minimum library tax.
I go for the following resolution, move it to adoption. Seconded motion.
Motion, so that we can have a call, followed by roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, the resolution is adopted.
So I think we are done with the 2014 budget matters, now we're going to public hearings.
One more, excuse me, I think you have to act on the Board of Education letting?
Oh, sorry, I skipped that one. We have a resolution, I 061434D, resolution to set tax levy for Board of Education 2014. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Resolution passed, thank you. Now we're going to the public hearings. And you know, here, Mr. Chami, Degara is here, we're going to have a Degara, Degara Cafe Restaurant.
I would ask about, you start with the Gambinos matter, both licenses are represented by Mr. Gussis, who's present here in the council chamber. The Gambinos matter will, I believe, maybe quicker, inasmuch as, I've had extensive discussions with Mr. Gussis, with Detective DeBonus, other members of the New Brunswick Police Department regarding the licensee's operation at that particular location, as well as the initial recommendation that the licensee had imposition of a special condition to employ an extra-duty New Brunswick police officer on Sunday evenings. As the council probably gathered from the review of the tavern report, the licensee has voluntarily been hiring extra-duty police officer on that Sunday evening when they believe there is a need for saying, apparently in connection with their Sunday evening entertainment or clientele, if you will. After speaking with Mr. Gussis and obtaining an affidavit and certifications from a licensee, and reviewing that with the representatives of the New Brunswick Police Department, along with Detective DeBonus, the licensee has voluntarily agreed to be bound by a condition of employment of an extra-duty police officer on Sunday evening. Now, I know that we've talked about special conditions in the past. We have taken all of the considerations that this particular license has presented us with respect to their prior history of infractions, there being really none, in that the licensee has stepped up, so to speak, in addressing the situation and the condition. So we, myself included, and Detective DeBonus, the bonus and representatives of the police department feels comfortable and confident that renewal of this license without the imposition of this special condition will not be a problem going forward. Now, having said that, I will advise the council that Mr. Gussis and I, and Mr. Gussis with his client, has had extensive discussions advising him that if there is problems at this location, whether there's this special extra-duty officer there on Sunday evenings or not, that his client is subject to being charged under the ABC regulations for maintaining a nuisance or conditions that are in violation of the ABC code, which could result in a suspension of his liquor license. So I believe the licensee has full knowledge and understanding of that potential. And at this point in time, we're recommending to the council that the license be renewed without that special condition that was initially mentioned in the tavern report. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Mr. Gussis is here, Detective Debonus is over my right shoulder.
Will Mr. Gussis address the council?
If he would like, if not, I believe.
Well, I certainly will address the council. I thought there were a series of twenty incidents during the report period, I've gotten the reports, we've gone through them with Choka, who is the principal of Gambinos. He had hired a police officer for Sunday nights from last December, he's continued that, we've given the city an affidavit, which indicates that he's aware that the city has not imposed the condition on his license, that he's still subject to charges in the event that there are any violations. And for that reason, we ask that this be acceptable to the council to renew it without a condition.
Thank you. We have to have a question first.
Yeah, if you, thank you, Madam, Council President, members of council, inasmuch as this is the time for public hearing on this particular license renewal, it is appropriate that you open up this particular matter for public hearing if anyone here wants to be heard regarding the license establishment before the council makes their decision.
Any member of the public wishes to address the council on the license for Gambinos here, at this time? I would not, I would entertain a motion to.
See, not, I make a motion, we approve the license and we have tough conditions.
Second, roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
You said we have Degara?
Yes.
Degara Cafe?
Madam Council President, members of council, the next liquor license matter that's for council for consideration is the Degala Cafe Restaurant, which is another licensed establishment whereby Mr. Gussis represents the licensee. As the council is probably aware, this particular licensed establishment has been subject to special conditions for the past ten or more years. The two special conditions that were renewed at the time of the 2013-14 license term were twofold. One, the licensee was to employ extra-duty police officer on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evenings from 10:00 to 2:30 a.m. for purposes of extra security. The second condition, that condition being, a condition to turn off the music, or the cessation of music, as we refer to it, at 1 a.m. on Friday and Saturday evenings, and 11 p.m. on Sunday evenings. Now, as the council is, I'm sure, also well aware, this particular licensee and the city have been involved in an appeal process over those two particular conditions. Actually, let me correct that, actually, the police extra-duty condition wasn't appealed, it was the cessation of music that was appealed in connection with the proceedings from the 2013-2014 license term. That matter has been heard before an administrative law judge, actually, the briefings, I believe, are due next week, and no decision has come from the administrative law judge as of yet, and I don't anticipate that to happen probably until the early fall, in all likelihood, maybe September. But in the meantime, the license comes before the council for renewal again. I'm sure the council has had an opportunity to review the tavern report, which is a quite detailed report containing the backup materials that support the calls for service to that particular establishment. And I know that Detective DeBonus, with the assistance of Officer Braugh, have monitored the conditions in and around that particular establishment from the report perspective. Now, their recommendation is, is that these two special conditions remain in place at the time of renewal. Mr. Gussis and I have exchanged discovery materials. I know that he may want to be heard with respect to the imposition of the special conditions. I would submit to the council that the City of New Brunswick Police Department is relying upon the tavern report and its backup materials. Detective Bonus and Officer Braugh, who's involved, are both here for any questions that you may have, as well as Mr. Gussis for the members of public. So having said that, I would submit this particular license application for the council's consideration, and perhaps you'd like to have Mr. Gussis first address the council, and then we open it up to the public.
I just want to say that I want to comment that the officers who prefer the tavern report, for the first time that I, since I have been here, we receive a very extensive detail before, an excellent report, there's no doubt, there's, because with all the officers putting down every night, what if anything happened, the phone calls, so we took the time, you know, you could see that they took the time, and I really appreciate it, it was very important for me to understand, not just on a paper, it says so many accidents without knowing what the incidents were about, so it tells you very detailed information that I think it was very helpful to all of us, in the sense of knowing what is happening out there in this instance, so I really thank you, I just wanted to say that publicly, you did an excellent, excellent job. Mr. Gussis, would you like to address the council?
Yes, I would. Before I do that, I would like to hand you out each a schedule of exhibits that I've exchanged with Mr. Chami, so that you have them in front of you when I refer to them As we know, the conditions that Mr. Chami indicated are under appeal now, only involve a police officer, and only involve the three days. But we also have concerns over the time, so I'm going to refer you first to Schedule A on the handout that you have before you. What I did is, I took all of the police reports that were given, and you know that the officers are to be there Friday nights, Saturday nights, and Sunday. And then, if you look at the Degala case reports, I have the date of the reports, and I also have indicated by a number next to the date of the reports where there is actually a report, the officers' names appear there. So you could see that there were, during this period of time, and I want to tell you that Mr. Rodriguez ceased operations at 10 o'clock on Sunday night in December of 2013, so that there were no, there was no police officer on duty on those evenings, and I'll explain to you why. So if you look at that, you'll see when there was unfounded complaints, when there were disorderly complaints, and on the last page, I give you a total number of the Saturday, Friday, Saturday, and Sundays, and they totaled 108. And during those times, there were 67 reports, and the log will tell you when there was no complaint founded. In other words, somebody complained, but they went there and they didn't see anything, and also, if the matter took place outside. And outside of one incident where there was noise, because the biggest problem was when the people exit, and they're on the street, that's when the noise occurs, but except for one instance, there was not an instance where any music from the inside was heard outside, because Degala has double doors. So that's what Schedule A is. Then I'm going to refer you to Schedule B. Schedule B is a letter from Mr. Lachlan, our city administrator, who confirms for you that Degala had no music on, had no officers from December, January on to this date. Now, Schedule C is part of a transcript of the hearing that we had. So the restrictions on the license, and I have the resolutions in a summary, so you can see when the restrictions were placed out, when you suspended them. Now, Mr. Barker was one of the ones who instigated the police officers being there, and Mr. Barker testified during our last hearing, and he testified in February of this year. testified during our last hearing, and he testified in February of this year. Now, Mr. Barker, during this period of time, after we filed our appeal, the city took an emergent action to have the director release the city from one of the waivers, one of the states, and one of them was when the music would be turned off on Sunday night. So on Sunday night, the director upheld the city and said, "You have to close at 11:00." So you have an ordinance, which I'm going to show you here, that says that if someone hires an officer from the City of New Brunswick, the minimum he can hire him for is four hours, so that if he were to stay open that night with one hour of music, he would have had to pay them for four hours. So I'm going to go over the money so that you understand that my client is taking this whole thing very seriously. So Mr. Barker testified in this transcript hearing here on February 24th that on a Sunday at midnight, this is in February, it was the weekend before the hearing, the hearing, this date was on Monday, he went, he could hear when he went to bed at 12:00, the thumping of music, and he went out and confirmed it was coming from Degala. So at 12:00 at night on that Sunday, Degala had been closed, they closed at 10:00, and they had been closing at 10:00 from December. So he is the one that testifies at all these hearings and tells you that this is a constant problem. So you should know that either he's elucidating or he's lying, and that's something we should take into consideration when you make your decision. Now, if you look at Schedule T of what I've given you, this is so that you can understand how Mr. Rodriguez takes this seriously. This is a certification from his account. You placed the restrictions even before this, but in 2009, to pay the police officers in Brunswick, he paid them $32,760. In 2010, he paid them $35,170. In 2011, he paid them $53,056. In 2012, he paid them $84,562. The second certification brought it up to date. In 2013, he paid another $84,000. And so far this year, he's paid them $37,000. It'll be late this year because he's not opening on Sundays. So that you can see that he's not treating this as a joke. He's serious, because it is, he's there in business to make money. Now, if you look at Schedule E, you will see the resolutions that you passed and the restrictions that you put on time, and if you look at the S's that appear on Saturdays and Sundays, you will see that after you imposed the restrictions, you suspended them during those periods of time, so that they didn't go into effect. So you know at the bottom. And the resolutions that are summarized on that sheet appear right behind them. Now, the next thing you'll see is you'll see the order which stays the restrictions except for the one on Sunday night. Now, if you look at the last amendment, you'll see that you have your ordinance there. You have an ordinance which says that the minimum amount of time that the officers can be hired is for four hours, so that you can see that on a full year, when he hasn't there, it's a total of $84,000. Now, the log tells you what the violations were, that's Schedule A, and on Schedule A, we've indicated what the policies are. Degala has internal security besides the police officer. It has officers, it has security people who come on those nights. They have six a total, even at the door. So they have implemented this, they now go out. The manager has had a meeting with the sixth ward, with the second ward crime watch for the first time. No one ever spoke to Degala during this entire, all the years of the restrictions. There never was a meeting. I know that Councilman Fleming had suggested the last time these people should talk. So the talk finally happened, the manager was there, there was an interpreter, the people expressed themselves, and so we've instituted some policies where people will come out. At the time when the people come out of the place, one of the things is they go out and smoke, and they talk, and they make noise while they spoke. So those policies now are in effect, and so what we're asking that you consider is that you give a period of suspension during that period of time with the rank of the conditions to put us on probation for a period of time as you did once before. And that is our position this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Shami, before I go, would you like to discuss...
No, I will advise the council that I did have an opportunity to view what Mr. Gussis has submitted for the council's consideration, and I have no objection to its consideration in connection with these proceedings. One thing I forgot to mention is that there were additional reports that Mr. Gussis had requested, and in response to Mr. Gussis, I'd really like to copy the council with those, and those additional reports should have been in your meeting packets, which I'm sure you had a chance to review as well. So having said that, I have no objection to your consideration of these materials.
I do say a roll call.
Question.
Yes.
Mr. Gussis, the 11 o'clock Sunday closing, is that going to be in the future also?
No, it's not. That is one of the things that we're...
Mr. Gussis, if you would like to...
That is one of the things that we're appealing.
So just so I understand, you're requesting for us to put a suspension on the, on the, in our, on our, what do you call it?
Special conditions.
Special conditions. Till the time period until the decision comes out from the court case?
No, we're actually, whatever you do tonight, it will require some further action from us if you impose the conditions. What we're asking is not that it coincides with that period of time, because the director has already indicated it's 11, but what we're saying is for you to suspend it for a period like you did before, like for a 90-day period. You did, and there was no, there was no request for a hearing. It went on for like seven or eight months where there was no action taken and no complaints until it was before the council. So we're asking you to give us a 90-day period to prove to you that the security issues that we've addressed are effective.
Now, just want to, Mr. Shami, if you are saying that we should...
Right. The recommendation of the police department, which I join in, is that the special conditions be re-imposed. Just for point of clarification, Mr. Gussis, is it your client's request that the special condition as the police extra-duty and the cessation of music be suspended both, or just music cessation condition?
At this point, we're only asking for the music, but in the event that both conditions are, the next appeal will include the police also, because the cost now is really prohibitive, which is why we believe that we deserve an opportunity to show that we're serious, and I want you to see the money so you can see what makes us serious.
Mr. Gussis?
Yes.
If we ask, if they close at 11 without the police, would that be a compromise at all?
No, because under your ordinance, if you look at, under your schedule, they have to pay, if they have the police there for one hour, they have to pay them for four, and so it comes out to over $500 for one hour. And that, if you look at it, it is the, it's going to add...
If we don't put the police on Sundays and they close at 11, and just on Friday and Saturday, would that be okay with your plan?
I can ask.
Okay.
At this time, what Mr. Gussis said, the information I have, as any member of the public, we just to address the council on these specific licenses. To go forward, just take your name, address, and you have five figures to address.
I will take that one. Thank you, President Escobar. I'm Maria Pilar, I'm an occupant of 153 Nickel Avenue and president of the second ward neighborhood block club and crime watch. I'm here tonight to address the liquor license renewal for the Degala Cafe. I'm somewhat distressed, actually, that I'm here, because this establishment is actually a non-conforming use in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is zoned for restaurants that have a bar and tavern, and they are running a nightclub. They just asked to extend their music till 2:00 in the morning. What restaurant has music and often live or loud DJ music till 2:00 in the morning? Are they serving food or just alcohol from that period that they're requesting to extend their music? So this restaurant should not exist as a nightclub in our neighborhood, as I understand the zoning ordinances of the neighborhood. Anyway, on April 28th, the block club provided a forum for a representative of the Degala Cafe to speak to our members. What we heard was very concerning, and it confirmed that in fact we do not have a restaurant and a bar operating in our neighborhood by the nightclub, a use that is specifically not allowed in this area of the neighborhood. In the past year, the newspapers and the New Brunswick Police have reported numerous problems that Degala, including large groups of people fighting right inside and outside of the bar, a shooting inside the bar in November of 2013. Residents have been concerned with noise emanating from the club in the late evening and early morning hours, a loud party-like atmosphere on the streets at 2:00 a.m., and I don't know how they don't think that's their problem, because that's coming out of their establishment. And if you live in the community that has a bar laying out at 2:00 a.m., you know how disconcerting it is to be woken up and have to go to work the next morning, drunk, rolling customers, people urinating in the streets, and a person is found beaten and unconscious. This behavior should not occur actually in any neighborhood in New Brunswick. We're not opposed to businesses operating in our neighborhood so long as they comply with zoning codes, noise or incidents, and social norms of residential neighborhoods. We have to remember this is a residential neighborhood. This establishment clearly does not comply with the social norms. The city council should take action to enforce the zoning ordinances in our neighborhood, and we thank you for this.
I just have a question, because you mentioned that you, when you met with the owner and...
No, we met with the representative.
You said that you heard something that it was alarming. Why was it that you heard that it was alarming that they were talking?
So I have a sort of, I have a problem. Our members have an understanding of confidentiality when they enter our meetings. We hold meetings in a public space, but we do keep confidentiality about the specifics, so that's why I don't give you many specifics.
No, but you just hear, because, you know, I just, I would like to know, is it, is statement of alarming...
We heard about, you know, we hear about the violence that has occurred, I mean, for example, the shooting, I mean, the gun in the club, that it was recorded in the papers, in the newspapers, several of the sightings that have turned out.
No, and I need, maybe, let me rephrase it.
You said that you heard, my understanding of what you just said is that you heard something from the people from the establishment that was alarming. What did you hear they say, you know, because the statement was that you heard something alarming. They did not respond to your concerns? What was it that you felt that was...
They did respond to our concerns, but it's the details of what they told us that was alarming, and I, again, because of this agreement of confidentiality for our group, that we extend that to everyone who comes and speaks to us.
Can, I don't know, Mr. Shami or somebody, the non-conforming, if you talked about the zoning, is that true, not true?
It's my understanding that that issue has been explored, and it's a pre-existing non-conforming use in the neighborhood, but it's technically a neighborhood restaurant bar, and they do serve food, and with my understanding, they still serve food. So to the extent that their menu is varied or not, I don't think that could be a determinative factor, but my understanding that they can have music at a restaurant tavern, but technically a nightclub is not a, and I'm not a zoning expert, but technically a nightclub is not a permitted use of that neighborhood. That would be a true statement.
Could I make a comment?
If you could, before somebody else, if related to what Ms. Pilar just said?
I think, yes.
So you will come to the microphone, please.
I would just like to comment on the shooting incident. Degala has over 20 cameras both inside and outside the building. The one thing that they did not do, which we now have changed, is they never pat down women in their security. The cameras proved that night, because they tracked how that gun got into place. A woman actually brought the gun into the place, and she gave it to the man who did the shooting. And so now, they instituted a way of also checking out the women when they come into place, open their purses, and so on and so forth. But that's what happened with that incident. Now, Mrs., the lady who just spoke now, she's commented on this place as a nightclub before. Their kitchen is open all the time. They have a full kitchen. Every time the rest, the bar and restaurant are open, it's not just called a restaurant, their kitchen is actually open all the hours, people can eat, and music is an accessory use. If she thinks there's a zoning violation, she could make that. She did it in her first letter two years ago, and then she dropped it in her second one. And I don't know why she's bringing it up now, because all the people that testified at that hearing, none of them had ever been in Degala. So all they're talking, they're talking without any personal knowledge of it, and some of these people can't, are not even anywhere near the place to hear any music, but the hearing made it very clear that the biggest problem was when people come out of the place. It's not that they could hear the music as a regular course, as Mr. Barker testified he could when the place was closed. The doors, the doors, they have to have someone there to make sure the inside door is closed when people go out the outside door. That was it, and so he's addressing that. As I said, he has six security people there. Now they're going outside as a result of the meeting with the crime watch. And I'm very sorry that the confidentiality is such that she's more interested in the confidentiality. We're not asking who said what. She could at least tell them what it is that the problem is, and they can address it. Solving a problem should be a religious experience. She should come forth and say what the issue is.
Any other member of the public wishes to address? Please come forward to the microphones, take your name and address. Listen.
Hi, my name is Lyra Scandary. I live at 154 Commercial Avenue, which is across the street from Degala Cafe. There's a number of issues I'd like to respond to and address. Number one, it's not rocket science when the music gets turned off and the establishment is closed. Obviously, people will exit the establishment and go out into the street, go into cars. As anybody here, I'm sure, has been to a nightclub-style establishment, and I can talk a little bit about that as well. When you've been in a very noisy environment with very loud music system, sound system, it's understandable, it's difficult to then transition into a residential neighborhood at 2:00 a.m. and decrease your volume level when talking to your friends. I mean, I'm guilty of it too, especially when you've been drinking. So this is, I mean, this is naturally to be expected. We're not blaming, you know, the people going to the establishment. This is human nature, you know, this is something that we're all guilty of. So given that, we would obviously want the conditions to be kept, we want the establishment to close earlier and the music to be turned off earlier, so that when this event does occur, when the patrons do exit the establishment, it can happen as early as possible, so that instead of me being woken up at 2:00 a.m., I can at least go to bed a little later and have consistent sleep, because I do have to be up in the morning and go to work. And I'm not representing the rest of my community, but I do, you know, I want to also create a distinction of my neighborhood before this occurs, before basically the music starts in the daytime, after school hours, versus when, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, when this music is on and it is operating like a nightclub. There are at least 10 to 15 children living just within that corner. So besides me having to go to sleep and wake up in the morning and go to work, please understand that these are kids that I live next door to, that regardless of anybody else advocating or not advocating for them, I cannot imagine that they're getting the opportunity to succeed in school if they are living in an environment where Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, especially Sunday night, they are experiencing that kind of noise at 2:00 o'clock in the morning. Additionally, and I want to address the nightclub issue, because whether it's been dropped or rigged... dropped or revisited, I think, I was the one that brought in images of promotional flyers that were published online that clearly indicated that there was an admission price, which is, one of the definitions of a nightclub operation is when you charge an admission fee for live music. So, that's just one example. That was something that I was able to find. Unfortunately, I do have a job. This is not my full-time job to keep after what is being published or not being published on promotions and admission fees. But that was, maybe there are other examples, I'm not sure, but that's just one example of possibly more. And there was something mentioned about smoking being an issue, that patients exit and smoke. That's not the only issue. I mean, it really isn't. People aren't just going out and smoking and talking to their friends a lot of the day. They're urinating, they're fighting, there's been a lot of violence. They're parking illegally, they're screaming to each other across the street, they're standing in the middle of the street, they're disturbing any kind of traffic that's going on at that hour. And the last time that the suspension was put into place, the number of complaints doubled per year. Now, we can go back and forth about the validity of these complaints, but I don't think that anybody that has been in that area at the time that this establishment is functioning can deny the fact that they are playing extremely loud music, that people are exiting the establishment and being loud at minimum, if not violent, and disrupting the peace of that neighborhood. I would like to give you a little bit of just my experience as a resident.
I just want to make aware that the time is almost done. You still have some, a few seconds, okay?
Okay. I just want to give you an idea of the things that I've seen. I've seen people literally pushed with full force down to the ground, face down, literally face down, like this, like a doll. I've seen people fighting physically. I've seen literally just this past Saturday, there were, I think, seven cop cars, six cop cars and seven cops restraining a man to the ground. And this is just the most recent experience of what I have experienced at 2:00 in the morning. And I want to remind you that I'm a working person, and there are other working people who may not be able to be here. Thank you so much.
Five minutes for the podium, please, to comment.
Yeah, comment.
This just finished, will you remember what I go rather ways?
Before Mr. Barker comes on, Ms. Skandary lives, Ms. Skandary lives with Mr. Barker.
Sir, there are five minutes to talk. They could sit down and come back. Doesn't preclude him from coming back into the podium. That's the way we do it here. It's not the same as in the county.
Ms. Skandary lives with Mr. Barker, and the officers, this is the first year that you have had reports from the officers who are assigned to Degala. If you look through all the past tavern reports, that the officer who was assigned to Degala never was asked to give a report, never. And that was the test, the hearing. So, all these years, with all this money being spent, the person who really should answer for what's going on at Degala should have been the one that the city assigned there. We don't pick the person that they sent. They should be objective, and they should tell exactly what happened. So, in all the things that Mr. Shami said that you now have that you reviewed, those are the first time in 10 years that they've ever made any reports so that you can see what they mean. Now, there wasn't, I have to tell you, there wasn't incident this past Saturday. It was unfortunate, but it was the exception, not the rule, because this was really a big incident. And it was people coming out and then getting into a fight in front of the place, and there were a lot of police there, and a couple of your police officers were hurt. That's something that Mr. Rodriguez, I mean, it was so unexpected that even their security couldn't deal with it.
Mr. Gassus, there. She talked about a price being charged for admission.
Oh, let me comment on that. She has nothing to say. The flyers that came at the hearing, what was the Mother's Day fundraiser for Dominican Mother's Day, and it says gratis on it, free, and there's no admission being charged to go in there. And he only has like a fundraising, there was someone who had a child who had cancer, they asked if they could have an affair there, and they did. This is not something that they have every week or anything like that. It's just extraordinary events.
Thank you. Any other member from the public wishes to address the council on these matters? Say your name and address, sir.
My name is Wayne Keller. I am not a resident of New Brunswick, I live in North project. I'm the accountant for Degala. And besides being the accountant, I've also been a customer, client, whatever expression you want to attach to that. I've been at Degala anywhere from noon to 2:00 in the morning, and I'm also a smoker, so I also go outside for cigarettes. I have never seen anybody outside urinating, and I didn't notice anybody being that loud. And I go outside and I smoke, and I usually stand there and BS with people when I'm out there having a cigarette. I've been in and out of the place all kinds of hours because, again, they go there socially as well as the business aspect. And I've never seen any issues that affect anybody, and I, not being a member of the Hispanic community, have never had a problem arguing locally, arguing in a parking lot, going in and out of the place. And I'm not a member of the Hispanic community. I kind of stand out a bit when I walk in there, and I've never had any issues, never a single problem.
Thank you, sir. And anybody else, anybody who has not had a chance to talk before we have? Good morning, sir.
Good evening. Will Barker, 154 Commercial Avenue. As you know, this problem's gone on for years and years, and even during garbage, parking problems, you know, there's nowhere for us to park in front of our house. And previous, the previous tenants, the previous owners of, I guess it's 156 Commercial, the building where Degala is, was not a nightclub. There was never any problems with noise outside that establishment. I think if you go back, it was a bar and restaurant. They served pizza. It was called Pizza Mill. And ever since it was purchased, we've had, you know, they've turned, at first they had live bands, huge live bands, and DJs, and they charged admission. It's definitely a nightclub, and there's absolutely no two ways around that, whether they serve food or not, it's immaterial to us. It's just, they make money by having loud music play, and they have a dance floor. I'm sure the fire department can look at that because there's a requirement for them to submit plans, and the table in certain places, if you go in there, they've already defined once for having violated their floor plan. I know they defined years ago for having double their occupancy, violating their occupancy. And four or five days later, after that, we were firebombed. We were part of the reason why they were prosecuted for that. We were asked to cooperate with the police. In the last year, there have been several stabbings, there have been continual situations where on Friday or Saturday or Sunday night, you look out our window and we see six to eight, well, about 12 cruisers with close to 20 police officers. There was basically a riot in the middle of Commercial Avenue. And there've been several stabbings, a shooting on Christmas Eve. Okay, Christmas Eve, right? Where are you on Christmas Eve? With your family. We had our family, my fiance's family was inside my house, we were having them overnight there, we had dinner, we're all going to sleep. You know what happens? Because Degala closes, and there's a huge fight outside Degala, and a guy is beaten unconscious right in front of our house, and is laying there, and then they police taped out the area, dry. Anyways, this is not a quiet, safe neighborhood. And what we're asking you to do is help us, help them, help everyone involved with this find common ground, and to create a safe, quiet neighborhood, not one where people are being beaten to death on Christmas Eve, beaten unconscious on Christmas Eve, shot or stabbed multiple times because, and because this place exists. If it didn't exist, these things would not be occurring. So, we are very, very concerned. The last time that there was a relaxation of conditions each year, I think the complaints were 10 per year when the conditions were in effect. Conditions were relaxed, it went to 50. Conditions continue relaxed, it went to 83. Conditions were continually relaxed, it went over 100. So, I think we know what's going to happen if the conditions are relaxed. We've already moved down that program. Anyways, we would ask that if the violence continues at Degala, if these problems continue in Degala, and this is not a matter of debate whether this violence occurs, it's a matter of record. You know, ambulances don't show up and they don't drag people, you know, carry people into the ambulance because there's been an unfounded noise complaint. We would ask you that if the violence does not stop, that we either continue to further restrict the hours of operation of Degala, or increase the police officer presence that is required by law from one officer to two officers on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, yes, Mr. Bos?
I just wanted to say that you already have the transcript where he was hearing things when Degala was closed. The incident that he's talking about on Christmas Eve, we didn't see a police report on that, and all the things that went on. But one thing that did occur at the hearing is Officer Severs testified. Officer Severs was one that was assigned the most. And I, and I asked him, I say, Officer Sever, I have the transcript here too. Officer Severs, when was the last time you were there? And he said, in the summer. Why? Because Mr. Barker complained that he wasn't doing his job. I said, so is anyone else complaining about noise? He said, no, only him. So, that, so why we asked for the reports all these years was so that Mr. Barker's calls, Mr. Barker never went over across the street. He could go and swat the officer and say, hey, I can hear the noise across the street. He doesn't do that. He calls the police because your CAG report was not helpful to you at all. All it said is how many calls were made. It didn't tell you whether they were substantiated or not. So, he would call constantly, and nobody would check to see with the officer in charge, is it true that there's noise? So, the report that you have for this year doesn't have the full year reports because they didn't start in the beginning of the year. Now, Mr. Barker complaining about parking, Mr. Barker owns two buildings on Redwood Street Avenue, and it, I'm sorry, Commercial Avenue, and between them is a separate foot strip that's owned by the city of New Brunswick, and that's where he parks. He's never without parking, never. And I have brought that to the city's attention because he's constantly complaining when he has his own parking lot and the taxpayers are funding him.
Sir, in the front row, if you'd like to address that, he was, he had the first.
My name is Peter Montague. I live at 153 Nico Avenue in New Brunswick, and an active member of the Second Ward Neighborhood Block Club and Crime Watch. And I was there the evening, I was at the Crime Watch meeting when the gentleman from the Degala made his presentation. The gentleman said that he had previously worked at another club, that was his phrase, another club. So, he's acknowledging that the Degala is a club, which is not a legal use of the property in the zone which they are located. He said that at the other club, the police in another town in New Jersey had been more helpful to them because they had, at that time, three police assigned to their club in this other town. So, the New Brunswick police who were present at the Second Ward meeting that I'm describing to you said to him, would you like to have three police required for your establishment so that they could help you control your patrons? The gentleman said, no, he didn't think, here he needed three police. But I'm suggesting that that might be a good idea, that if you added to the restriction that they have three police officers to control their patrons, they might do a better job of controlling their patrons. Police at the, in an interchange between the police officers present at this meeting that I'm describing and the gentleman representing the Degala, there was a back and forth, and the police officer described an incident in which there were 15 drunk patrons of the Degala and two police officers struggling to control 15 drunk patrons. And the police officer said that during that incident, the bouncer, that was his term, the bouncer at the Degala was drunk and was not helping the police control the situation, but was making the situation worse. The Degala representative did confirm what their lawyer said, that they now are searching their or frisking their female patrons to see if they're carrying handguns into the restaurant. Very interesting condition that they have to put up with in this, at this restaurant. I would ask the City Council members to personally, at some point this summer, go there for dinner. Go there around 9:30 at night, just order dinner, and see if this place is, in your opinion, a restaurant tavern or a club. We have all indications that it's a club, which is not a permitted use in this zone. Please do this for us. Just inform yourselves by going there, experiencing the ambiance of this place, and make up your own minds about whether or not it's a club, which is an illegal use, or a restaurant tavern, which is a legal use. And then I think we'll begin to reach agreement about the nature of the problem that the Degala presents in a residential neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Mr. Donahue, right? Is it Mr. Donahue? Mr. Donahue?
You'll have to look at the transcript.
You can see how, you can see how chaotic it is. I can tell you, you know we're different avenues, all right? And you know how far it is from Commercial Avenue. And the fact is that the manager who went to that meeting, I was not there at that meeting last night because I only learned a bit that day, he speaks only Spanish, and he spoke through an interpreter that evening. So, how Mr. Donahue made all these observations that he's talking about, you have the police officers, you can have the police officers who were at that meeting at the crime watch really have them talk and tell you what they said. But ask Mr. Donahue how many times he's eaten there that he's invited you to go there to eat, and you're welcome to go there to eat. He's never been in the place. That's what he testified last year. So, he's just sitting here as a fellow traveler for the crime watch. That's it. So, what does he add to it? He has never been there, he calls it a nightclub because that's their new theory of how Degala's being run, and it isn't. It's a restaurant. He, Mr. Rodriguez, the Pizza Mill, the Commercial Tavern had a CL of 250 people. When he modernized that place and took out a wall, he reduced its occupancy to 100. That's what he did. If he was interested only in money and not running a restaurant, he would have left it at 250 and cramped everyone in there. He didn't do that. But Mr. Donahue wouldn't know because he probably never went to the Pizza Mill either.
Yes. Lyra Skandary, 154 Commercial Avenue. First of all, I know what gratis means, thank you, and I'm sorry I don't have that flyer, promotional thing for me. I wouldn't be, I would be able to confirm what exactly it says. But I do speak a little bit of Spanish, I'm not completely ignorant to the culture, and I really resent personal attacks on me. This is not a personal issue. I don't have a personal issue with the owner of the bar. I don't have a personal issue with any of the patrons. I mean, you know, I welcome them to enjoy themselves, dance, eat food, listen to music. Just don't do it across the street from me at 2:00 in the morning. I mean, let's talk about the issues at hand. I'm not making a personal attack on people, and I just want to acknowledge that that's not the issue, and I really resent personal attacks on me and implications of personal biases that I do not hold. I get along just fine with my Hispanic neighbors, thank you.
Anybody else before we continue? Anybody from the council, any questions to say?
I'd like to answer Mr. Anderson's question.
How you doing? It's, uh, for Sir Rodriguez, I'm the owner of Degala. I don't got no problem with my neighborhood. I can, you know, they don't bring it in, it's all right. I should bring in like 50 people here. I say, no, it's not worth it. I got home on it for 30, 40 years, come down 75. Been running from Degala and the side and everywhere Degala. The only problem is Victor, he's the only one complaining all the time. I got all my neighbors, nobody complaining. Like I say, I got 100 calls, yes, I got 100, 200 calls, because I can't get my phone Like they say, I got 100 calls, yes, I got 100, 200 calls because I can't get my phone. I go any single bar in town, I start making phone call, or animal call. In two more, I gotta get 200, in every single bar. But when the police arrive, it's nothing going on. Always have 50 people fighting, I got the car right there outside. People yelling, who gonna yelling, running from the car? Yeah, they're gonna get arrested, they're gonna get a ticket. Not building the gala. And they be yelling, wait. Garry's outside, it's not Garry's outside. And they complain all the time. I got like all my neighbor, they can come in, I told them to go. They own the house, homeowners, couple of the homeowners is next to the gala. And they can come in and testify. The only guy complaining, saying, all the time. All the time, they say, oh, what are you gonna do with this guy? I say, well, he gonna get tired one day because I'm not gonna get tired, that's a food for my family. That's my business. I have to take care of my business, that's food for my family. I know over there to jog, probably, that's right here, running from you guys, I told the truth. Any problem, I can afford myself. I don't have to hide. Because that's a food for my family. I support my family, I don't sell drugs, I don't do nothing in the street. I work every day since 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock in the morning. You see me, you know, do the crazy shit like most of the people do. You know what I mean? I'm working there, my record is clean. They investigate me because he make the comments. One time, like somebody tried to break his house, I didn't even know about that. After the police, police department got following me for all years. What they get for me? Yeah, they got working 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock in the morning. And that they report it, they got found out, like, yeah, they be following me, they tap my phone, everything. What they get for me? A working man. And he came mouth to mouth, said like, oh, he gonna burst my heart. I didn't even know about that. After like six, seven months. They got one of my security guy, they got investigating, oh, look, 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 your boss, he got nice house, he got nice car, everything. Why work for him? You know, it's not my, jealous people go, oh, he got nice house, yeah, why work? Nobody see why I work from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock in the morning every day. Oh, he got nice house, yeah, I got nice house, yeah, why work for him? And they got him investigating in the police department for three hours. That's the problem. People cross the street with the Thomas, he live over there for 40 years, he don't have no complaint. He the one, shoot, won't complain because that's running from his store, that's in front of the gala. And he say, I don't hear music, I don't hear nobody. I run the clean business in town, no drug, no nothing. And they be talking about other people, yeah, but you work, work from front of shop to the park, during the daytime. And you gonna see other car blow you home because you are working, they gonna blow you up. Why? They looking for prostitution. Soon they got this day at nighttime, it's done. That's it, over. You see couple in the daytime, but you don't see a nighttime like before. Because I got the cop, what I think, I got the cops outside, and that's a, you work over there, everybody pass by, blow you home. Then there are prostitutes, it's gone, no, it's not more. Because I think you got a problem, I think you got everything there. I go to my neighbor, make sure everything's good, everything, same thing. And I can communicate, man, he talking about, yeah, he got a party the other day, like five, six years ago, somebody fought for the second floor. They were drunk or they be high, I don't know what they are, but the girl for the second floor, they jumped at the floor. He don't say that, right? And he got an ambulance, he got 20 police officers in there, and he got a party. And he's a musician. He got liquor studio in his house, I don't, I don't, he make his house a living, I don't care. He don't bother me. He make his, you know, social, the way he living. But he, he's a sound guy. He got liquor studio in his house, I don't care. That don't bother me. You know, they, he know that. He running illegal business for his house, bike thing, I don't care. And I don't go checking people, whatever you do for a living, that's your own problem, that's your business. But he's gone back like 10 years, we need him to fight for this, every year. Then he stopped a little bit, then he know where I do my license, he start calling. I can get my phone right now, I go, anybody in town, start calling him. I got him 10, 2, we are gonna make 200 call. But when the police arrive, they should get a ticket. I should get a ticket because when they know it's me, it's waste the time to the police and anybody. They go, I got a police officer right there in front. He the one know everything what's going on outside. And they got a surveillance camera, check the camera, but the police outside. You know, he know what's going on. All right, thanks.
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council on this matter?
I wanted to answer Mr. Anderson's question, right?
Yes, sir.
The question you asked is, would he, if he didn't have to have a police officer to close at 11:00 on Sundays, sorry, I spoke. He said if he can close the regular hours on Saturday and Sunday, and he can close at 12:00 midnight on Sunday, he'd accept that?
With a police officer?
Not on Sunday nights, but the police officers would be there on Friday and Saturday nights.
And a police officer on Sunday, or any officer?
He will close at 12:00. No, he can't because then it's four hours, he's got to have it for four hours.
Anybody from the council? Detective DeMornis, do you have a chance to, would you like to have a chance to talk about this, about the proposition of doing Sunday, closing at midnight, without police officers?
I believe he said the four hour minimum would affect him. I would suggest maybe we push the officer up, let him show up at 8:00 P.M. and stay till midnight then. He doesn't have music, you know? The music is not necessarily the entire issue.
It's just coming out, people coming out of the station, they're in charge.
That would be my suggestion for Sunday night.
Before we continue, so the recommendation from, I don't know if it's a question, is that the conditions continue, right?
As are the recommendations from the police department, not the president, members of council. And it'd be up to the council to decide what conditions are, if there's a desire to modify those conditions. But now would be the time to do it. If you wanted to discuss it in a closed session, I'm sure Mr. Hamilton could give you advice as to that.
Members, have a ready to move on?
I think I would like to make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, we're going into closed session to discuss the matter before, is right, Mr. Johnny?
Make a motion, we come out of closed session.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. This time, Mr. Hamilton, do you have a closed session minutes?
No, I have to, I have to write the matter.
If you could just agree.
Well, there was a discussion among all the members of council about what was the most appropriate way to proceed with respect, particularly the Sunday night, and whether or not these conditions were necessary to be continued. We fully explore it.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to, I make a motion to continue the conditions as they exist. Can I have a second?
Second.
Go forward.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. At this time, we have also, as part of the public hearing, we have the proposal of national contract with quality communications systems. Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, would you see if anybody is here from the VZOR?
Is anybody here from quality communications?
I'm not sure that the notice reached them. And I'm really gonna suggest to carry it to me. But this is about, the company is required by its contract, they have certain technicians available. It appears that they do not, they have not produced, but they are intended to be heard. And I think we carry number two, so for the university, if you want to see what it tonight, unless it would be.
No, I'm not a carrier because if we don't have a sort of certification that they would receive the notice, I just ready to wait for the.
Form a motion, I made a motion, we carry it for the next week.
Second.
Go forward.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Okay, we have ordinance, first reading, we have ordinance 401, ordinance providing for the 2014 general technical program by the city of New Brunswick, the county of Pinos, City of New Jersey, appropriated 2,295, they're open authorizing a salary amount of 3,297,000 and requiring a down payment of 155,895.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, July 2nd, 5:30, a public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Ordinance 402, one ordinance providing for various improvement to the sewer system by the city of New Brunswick, the county of Pinos, City of New Jersey, appropriated 2,250,000, therefore, an authorization of 2,250,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost throughout.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, July 2nd, 5:30, for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Go forward.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Ordinance 403 is an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 17, zoning, the new tolerance as a perverted use in 5 zone.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, July 2nd, 5:30, for public hearing, same date to be advertised. Another second.
Second.
Go forward.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, we have resolution 435 to resolution 475. At this time, does anybody has?
Just a reminder, we're pulling Resolution 44. Because you adopted the budget tonight, the temporary appropriations are not necessary.
Okay, so we have resolution 435 to 475, except 444 that was called, and 421 which we carried to the next meeting. At this time, any, no, no, I'm just asking before, any member of the council having questions about any of these resolutions?
When we get to it, yeah, okay.
Any member of the public, yes, sir?
Yes, good evening, once again, Charles Cradell of New Brunswick, MZ 41, number seven, payment for the police director's lawyer. Could someone tell me what the nature of the case is?
Mr. Hamilton?
Give me the number of interest.
441.
Number seven, ends in 441.
441, that's a one, when, as our.
Mr. Middleton was not happy about his promotion situation and he has.
The next one is payment for Detective Bornheimer. What's the nature of that?
Well, resolution number is that, Mr. Cradell, please.
The very next one.
442, Mr. Hamilton?
That was a shooting in which a man was killed after having fired off a starter pistol that looked like a real gun.
Next question, Mr. Cradell.
Right, and so regarding that, Detective Bornheimer, he's no longer on the force, correct?
He was not killed, he was not killed, he's seriously disabled.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton, does Detective Bornheimer, Mr. Corrin, employ any process, Mr. Latman?
He is retired.
Retired.
And when did he retire?
Do you have that information?
I don't have it at the moment. Months ago, but I don't have the exact date.
Okay, is it safe to say he retired because of this incident?
Mr. Latman?
I'm not sure I should speak about the terms of his retirement.
Next question, Mr. Cradell?
Okay, 443, representation for Sergeant Waggon. Says the final bill, what was the outcome of the case, what was the nature of the case?
I don't want to go for memory on that. My recollection is that this was a arrest in which was excessive force, but I really want to go back and get the point.
Mr. Hamilton will move back before giving you a second answer.
Thank you. Sergeant Waggon is still on the force, correct?
Sergeant Waggon.
Issues.
I wanted to ask about number 27, ending in 461, the agreement for psychological services for the police and fire departments. Can somebody explain the nature of this, why it's necessary, and whether this has been done before?
Mr. Latman?
We do it every year. We require our new hires, actually before an offer of employment, we ask them to submit to psychological examinations and that is part of the background checks that we do on potential hires.
Thank you. Just moving back a couple before that, we'd be ending in 458. Can someone explain why the bid is being rejected and rebid?
Escobar for translation services for the police department.
I can't, I think there might have been a lack of responders.
Thank you. Number 466, number 32, Business and Governmental Insurance Agency, what is the nature of this? It is to provide health care to the public workers.
The, they are the broker who assists the city in retaining the services of a traditional indemnity type of provider. It is health care, it's the largest health care program that we offer. And this is a, just extending the contract by one year with the current broker. We retain the broker in the first place by doing an RFP a year ago.
Okay, and can anyone tell me the commission that this broker is earning?
Mr. Latman, the commission?
I can, I believe it's $75,000. Sorry? It is, it is $75,000 a year. And it is paid by the insurance provider directly to the broker.
Right, and.
Any other questions, Mr. Cradell?
Yeah, can I just ask why we didn't do another RFP or why there was no, I mean, did we shop around to try to get a better deal? It sounds like a lot of money being spent just on someone to be a middleman.
No, I think that we do an RFP for this one, we are asking for an additional year.
As I said, we did do the RFP, we did select the best proposal that we thought at the time. When we put the RFP out, we did put in a provision that we could extend by a year if we chose to. And I still think that's an advantageous thing to do, that's why I'm recommending it.
Okay, well, fair enough, I would publicly suggest that next year, you know, when this expires, that you shop around and try to find different deals, perhaps that don't need a broker.
We always do.
You always need a broker?
We have done, no, no, that, we always shop around and try to see what is the best for the city and the benefits. Because we think of that, in guarding fees, you have requested, and even Mr. Renda, rest in peace, about the municipal, the state plan, so all of that we have done in the past and we continue to do the same.
Right, I think the state plan would be a good thing to look at, yes. And that is.
We look at the state plan every year.
That's what I said, every year, that's what I said.
Well, I know you did, but Mr. Cradell suggested it's a good thing to look at, we do it every year.
Every year, we look at it.
Thank you, that's all I have on the resolutions.
Thank you.
Assistant Council President, just with respect to two items that we need to just manage purposes of the consent agenda because of our liquor license matters tonight. You'll see Resolution 73 dealt with approved, disapproved imposition of conditions on Gambinos. And like the fact that you have renewed that license without conditions, that resolution can be pulled.
We continue the conditions that were there, it was previous.
And conditions on Gambinos.
Gambinos, I was gonna say, hang on.
Now, with respect to Resolution 45, we've, just a few amendments, somehow this got into the resolution adopting other liquor licenses. You'll see that the gala cafe in there, there's a separate resolution for that, which is 72, which comports with your motion here this evening. And. And the Kelly's Corner and the Platinum Lounge were previously acted on by council, so with special conditions, they shouldn't be in that particular resolution, so I would request that someone make a motion to delete those, and we'll make sure.
So, move, move on.
We'll make the appropriate changes to the final resolution.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. At this time, any other member of the public wishes to address the council on the specific resolutions that we have in front of us, with those that we discussed that will be carried on to the next meeting, some of them have been adopted, and some of them, we made some amendments that we have put forward. Are we not, are we going, anybody who's interested in motion to approve resolutions that were sent in?
Make the motion approved resolutions as projected.
Second.
I'm going to understand. Um, two forty-one.
And I must say that, eh, four seventy-four.
So, no, then.
Go on.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. At this time, any member of the council wishes to address the public? I just want to invite the, the public for this Friday, Unity Square is having a big community celebration that had to be postponed because of the rain, um, celebrating the opening of the community center, so. Just wanted to say that. Anybody else? At this time, anybody who wishes to address the council, please come to the microphone, say your name and address.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville of Brunswick, uh, what, what time is the block party?
I think it's from, at six, no, no, it's all day, from eleven to six.
Three to eight.
Three to eight, okay.
I'll be there, I can't wait, I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't be at the ribbon cutting, but I look forward to seeing your face. Uh, I wanted to ask about the community liaison, Ms. Gayden, she has office hours, can, can anybody tell me when those office hours are, I believe it's Thursdays?
As far as, have they changed from what we've seen had in the past, Mr. Latman?
Won't be any tomorrow because she's going on vacation.
So, they, they, her hours have been the same since it was, her position was instituted? No change?
Since she announced them, yes.
And so how are people supposed to know not to show up tomorrow?
There'll be someone out here at office.
So, so folks have been told that if they have a complaint against the police, that they're supposed to go here during this time, would have wasted a trip and wasted their time, is what we're told.
I, I, what I would say, Mr. Cradville, this hour and, and trying to do it, we put it in the city with, you know, city page that it has how to contact her, to have a notice there that she will not be available tomorrow, and moving forward, that we do something that way.
That would make sense, I know that, uh, Mr. Shabazz has requested a, a simple, an electronic copy of the verdict in his case, and that was more than two weeks ago, and he has not received a response.
I haven't heard from Mr. Shabazz, but I would follow up on that.
Thank you, yeah, I, I was intending to go to her office tomorrow and ask about this, but I guess it would be a waste of my time, so I won't. Uh, just to get this out of the way, Mr. O'Rourke and Mr. Mahoney, to be clear, they remain suspended without pay, and there is no date scheduled for their administrative hearing, is that correct?
Mr. Latman, that's what I'm.
To the best of my knowledge, that is correct.
Thank you, and Mr. Belafonte returned to work, and he is now a water meter reader, is that correct?
Mr. Latman?
Uh, he's training to be a ma- meter, water meter reader, and his training has been interrupted for a health issue.
Okay, and.
But he's an employee of the water utility, I think you had inquired about his hours of operation, he works eight-thirty to four-thirty, his salary has not changed from his previous position.
Thank you. I want to ask, do any of the council members know how much debt from the New Brunswick Parking Authority that the, the city is guaranteeing?
I think so. Anybody wants to answer this?
I'm not prepared to enumerate it, but I'm aware of the order of magnitude, yes, I think so.
I believe it is almost two hundred and fifty million dollars. Is that a, a healthy amount, is that normal?
Any debt is not a, is not, it's just a matter of procedure, and I don't think that, that two fifty million is, is the big amount. We have undertaken various budgets that, um, to improve and to make the cities and the communities, eh, services, better services for, eh, for this, one of those things that, that you have to, order to be able to move forward and to do great things, sometimes you have to incur in, in, in that, you want it to make it happen.
I understand, I just, I just, the figure jumps out at me as, as, uh, very large, especially when you consider the context of what happened with the latest parking authority project, they, uh, you know, they signed up with a, a company that was less than reputable to operate a supermarket, the company stopped paying the rent after just a couple of months, and the parking authority, it appears, didn't tell anyone that this was going on, including the council. I've, I've asked a couple times, and, and no one on the council has been able to say when, when they were notified of this. So my concern is if the city and the taxpayers are guaranteeing two hundred and fifty million dollars for this organization, we want to make sure that this organization has their finances in order, and, uh, like I suggested at the last meeting, it might be time to absorb the parking authority into the city, uh, so that there's not this division, uh, this separation, uh, where, you know, one entity can sort of have, uh, you know, be having employees stealing and, uh, uh, you know, tenants not paying the rent, and just sort of, uh, getting another blank check from the city when these things happen, it just, it just doesn't make sense, do you have any, uh, would that be something you would support?
I, I am not prepared to answer that question at this point.
Okay, well, I, I would, I would suggest that, that the council look into it, and consider attending parking authority board meetings, I'm, I'm one of the only people that attends, and I think that, that's part of the problem, is that there's this whole extra body of government that no one's paying attention to, and they're.
Can we, Mr. Cradville?
Yeah, okay.
Next question.
The next question is, uh, one that I asked, uh, following up from the last meeting, the emergency management council, I was told some members of that council are going to be participating in, uh, interviews with a outside firm. What is the purpose of these interviews, and, and what firm is it specifically that's conducting these?
Um, Bob, I'll answer it.
Mr. Ross is here.
All of the members of the, um, emergency management council participated in a day and a half of, uh, training and exercise with a consultant from California, um, at no cost to the city, the services of the gentleman were paid for by Johnson and Johnson. The purpose of the, um, conference, or the, the purpose of the, the contract was for us to, um, collectively assess the risks that are out there, um, that we are likely to face, maybe not likely to face, um, evaluate the assets that we have in place to address those situations, and to discuss ways to, to mitigate those risks going forward.
And so is it safe to say there'll be a report prepared by this outside firm?
Uh, no, I can't, I can't say that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Might suggest that there be one prepared, and then it'll be made public, I think these are issues that matter to everyone, and just regarding the emergency management council, or emergency preparedness committee, whatever it is called, um, they, they need to have a, a meeting sooner or later, and I think that they also need to have representation for Rutgers University and St. Peters University Hospital, um, and, and it would be wise to consider having, uh, members, uh, that, that might represent newspapers that cover the city, and I, I will be putting in an application.
Director Ross, is there any member from Rutgers University?
We had representatives from all those entities at the, uh, last risk analysis session. We didn't invite outside media, we have intricate information concerning the city's infrastructure, and it's not to be made public.
Thank you.
Who were the representatives from Rutgers and St. Peters, and then, I guess, that's all.
Do you recall Director Ross, who was there from Rutgers University and St. Peters?
Their OEM coordinator.
In both places.
Uh, Speed Calvin.
Yeah, and St. Peters, they have an OEM?
I don't have his name.
So we don't have his name, but we do get it, you know.
Okay, well, I think that's, that's concerning, if we can't say, state the name of the person who is.
There's a lot of people there, pressing, come on, you almost, you're almost done.
This.
So, thank you, we will find out that, that his name.
With all due respect, Mr. Ross is the coordinator for emergency management, he should know the name of the St. Peters Emergency Management Coordinator, if they're working together.
Thank you.
Felt slighed if you didn't say it.
Over there. No, Mr. Ross is power of us, thank you very much, yes, thank you.
You know, Pittman, two nine one seven street, going to New Jersey. I just want to say happy, uh, Juneteenth, a lot of people will be celebrating Juneteenth tomorrow, it's when, uh, you know, African American, the last African American was free in Texas in eighteen sixty-five, um, and that's quote unquote free, you know, so a lot of African Americans will be celebrating June nineteenth, um, you know, I say things like that because I'm probably the only black person who have the heart to come in here and say things like that. Also, uh, I want to question, there's a new, um, directive for the housing inspection, right? Atkins, right?
Yeah, Mr. Atkins?
Right here.
Okay, I wanted to know, like, what warranted that change, is, uh, Director Ross overseeing Mr. Atkins, or is it a switch, is it a, like, what was, what, and what was the reason for the change in Director?
Mr. Latman?
Um, Mr. Ross does supervise Mr. Atkins. Um, Mr. Atkins has, uh, extensive experience with, um, the state of New Jersey, I believe he's a retiree from, on the state of New Jersey, um, I think maybe in the, the criminal law division? Thank you. The mayor looked at his resume and thought he would be a wonderful hire to manage the housing unit, um, Mr. Ross interviewed Mr. Atkins, so did I, we all agreed, um, and he's been with us for a week and a half now. He's managing the unit that was once managed by, um, Mike Mahoney, um, but he still does work under, um, Bob Ross's ultimate supervision.
Welcome to the City of the Bronx. Nice to meet you.
Also, uh, you know, first I mentioned John Langley, I see, you know, Mr. Cradville mentioned John Langley, and, um, that's actually one of the officers that Mark Pappas mentioned that targets me, and it's strange that now he can't charge a excessive force, so I would think that you guys, even though I made sure that I wasn't going to mention too much police talk, but, um, guys make sure that, uh, you know, his situation is looked into, because I don't think he's a modern police officer, I truly don't, and I think his background will state that. Um, all right, back to, you know, I missed, I missed last council meeting, and, um, uh, the council meeting that I was present to, Councilman Cradley makes him, I guess, with brothers, I guess, on silent, about, you know, I guess, the situation, when I came in, people had pens on for, uh, Director Ross, I found that very offensive, and I'm not gonna, you know, just being that he's here, I'm not, I'm not the guy to talk about behind your back, I found that offensive because there weren't pens about the three children that were knocked across the street, they were, you know, and, um, my biggest issue was, I know a deer that been hit by vehicles that got more compassion than these, these three children did, so to constitute that also what offended me was, the city, I come in here, I've been the same person from day one since I've been coming to this microphone, I've been consistent, whether you agree with me a lot, whether you like what I say or not, I've been consistent, I don't change my speed, I don't, you know, I don't come in here and say one thing and do, and I don't like inconsistency, and the day that I came in here, when everybody had the pens on, what, what bothered my mind was, the spokesman for Director Ross was Keith Jones, and he was advocating for, regardless of whether he agreed it was justified or not, he was advocating for a person that hit three children in vehicles, but then a month prior, he was advocating a breakfast program for the children. So I, I, I mean, I don't know, am I on another planet, but how could the spokesman for a breakfast program also be the spokesman for a guy that just hit three people, three children in a vehicle, and mind you, that school was Livingston Avenue, so those three kids more than likely ate the breakfast that he implemented, so my thing is now, when later on comes down, could he put that shirt back on and be the spokesman for the breakfast by the bell? I just want to know, am, am I on another planet?
Well, uh, eh, you're entitled to your own opinion, it's a.
That's a fact, he was the spokesman for, he was the spokesman for the breakfast by the bell.
I'm just getting my opinion, I'm not motivating that, I'm telling you that you are entitled to your own opinion, whether I agree with it or not, research, Keith Jones is on here to defend himself, so the next time you see him, ask him that question, he doesn't work for us.
Wait, no, no, wait, 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 wait. But you raised the issue, when he presented the breakfast by the bell, she mentioned it and she applauded, you guys said this is a great program, this is good for the city, right? It is a great program, but I'm saying, the people that spoke for it, show some consistency, do you have compassion for the kids, no? When they're like.
That's a personal thing that you could be.
That's not personal, because you guys raised the issue, when you guys mentioned it, that's when, that's when I can address you guys.
And again, that's your personal opinion, that, and I respect that, so let's move on.
All right, well, at the end of the day, you know, uh, I said consistency, and a lot of people question, you know, uh, I guess, maybe because I was on the news, so, well, I've been on the news a whole bunch of times, two years, you know, uh, maybe because I didn't, I didn't, I don't go with, like, I don't spare feelings, you know, and Councilman Fleming, that, you know, that rebuttal really upset me because you spoke to me personally, you know, you spoke to me personally, and you waited till I left, and to say that, as if, uh, we get activists, we're the only people that import activists, I'm not importing, I'm, I'm born and raised here, I was born and raised here, and that, that's a fact, and also, I mean, if that's the case, then Martin Luther King, he died in a whole different state, so I mean, they do import activists, and I like, I mentioned consistency before because what you meant, what you said to me, and I remember, don't constitute what you're saying now when you sit in that seat, you don't constitute that, I hear you talk about your cousin who got shot down like a dog in the projects, yeah, but you never mentioned how the police used to beat your cousin up when he was living, you never mentioned the fact that when your cousin got shot down like the dog, the police, the police celebrated, they celebrated his death, and you're sitting in that seat, where's your soul at? Where's your culture?
I just.
What defines you?
Here we go, okay, here we go.
Mr. Please, Mr. Please, my breakfast.
No, no, excuse me.
No, because he's not, I just want to make him aware that he's still in his state, he passed at five minutes.
As I said, okay, now, okay, do you want to leave, okay, as I was saying, first of all, first of all, I spoke about the city, city is much bigger than you, so when we make, see, I gave you all your talent, it's much bigger than you, so, the people that we talked about being activists for the city, I wasn't just talking about you, believe it or not, we have a lot of other people who are very much more important than we have to bring up our, your name every single time, we don't spend a lot of time speaking about you all the time, so, for some reason, every time you say that I have not changed and stuff like, the problem is that you have not changed, it's always a noun of, uh, police are bad, noun for, this person is bad, and then it's a personal attack all the time, but for you to now bring my family into it, no, okay, whatever, but see, like I said, it's not a show, this is not a show for me, it's not, see, there we go, there we go.
Wait, 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 no, no.
Here we go.
Either we, we do it right, or we stop right here, we can stop right here, because I can stop right here, that's it.
I'm going to practice environmental, I'm going to practice my environmental thing, and I'm going to conserve it, because once again, you want to have a monologue about you, and I'm done, and I'm done, that's it, that's pretty.
Let me explain, let me explain why, wait, let me explain why I say what I say, hold on, wait, let me explain.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.